Senator, I'm Larry Vare, Chair of the Pearl City Neighborhood Board, and we're going to call the meeting to order at this time. I'll talk a little bit about our time policy and procedures, please adhere to that. I've got Cooney here, he's my timekeeper, you can show him what that looks like. You can't miss it. If you can't, I've got the Lions Club that's got extra glasses for you. Okay, anyone wishing to speak is asked to open the list of participants and click on the raise hand icon by their name, ones that are virtually, and when recognized by the Chair address comments to the Chair. Remarks should not exceed three minutes, please cancel the raise hand icon after speaking. Presentations must be kept under ten minutes. The chat box can also be used to ask simple questions, and Board members are required to keep their video active during the Board meeting. The Board may take action on any agenda item. As required by State Sunshine Law, specific issues not noted on the agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. Board actions such as draft resolutions and outgoing letters will be posted for public on the Google Drive. Okay, and what I... All right, for a roll call here, Cooney Agard. Rodney Wong. Charmaine Doran, my Vice Chair.
Here.
Diana Lee, our Treasurer.
Here.
Brandon Lee. And it's here. Dion Mester, our Secretary. Hey, Lawrence Mazzano, Jr. Dan Smith. Not here. Nate Giugiochi's not here. Tony Valesco.
Here.
Okay, and myself. Okay, we've got three missing. We have a forum. Okay, first on the line is the Honolulu, before I get started here. Board members, I'd like to add one thing to the agenda here. The Pearl City High School came to me yesterday, and I had committed to them earlier in the month when we met at the Lions Club Valentine's Breakfast. And they had asked if they could do a presentation on cybersecurity, primarily to educate the public about the bad actors who are scamming the public. So if there are no objections, I'm going to add that to the agenda. There will be number three under Presentations. And student Catherine Delacruz was the one that came out. So no objections, it's on there, okay. All right, first thing up, Honolulu Fire Department. They're busy fighting a fire somewhere. Okay, Honolulu Fire Department. I mean, Honolulu Police Department, I see you, sir. Sergeant Miller.
Hello, good evening. Sergeant Miller from District Three, and today I have the stats for the district. In the month of December, motor vehicle thefts are at nine, burglaries are at six, thefts, general thefts are like twenty-seven, and then vehicle break-ins are at eight. As far as January is concerned, motor vehicle thefts are at ten, burglaries are down to two, thefts are at twenty-eight, and then vehicle break-ins are at six.
Okay, great, anything else?
That's it, the only other thing we have is a safety tip for basically pedestrians or exercises, to make sure you wear bright colored clothing, especially if you're doing it in the early morning hours, just to add some safety aspect to your daily activities.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Board members, any questions for HPD? See and none virtually, and none in person, okay. Community, any questions for HPD? Okay, see and none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to public testimony, this is an opportunity for the public to come up. If you have any issues that you'd like to bring up to the Pearl City Neighborhood Board, it's the place to do it. And you have three minutes. Anybody have any issues? Yes, please, come up to the microphone and identify yourself.
Tom, from Palisades. So going down Koha Mai, as you come up to, going up to Palisades on Koha Mai, we got that rail by the river, it's all bust up now, and there's also a few signs that's all bent down too. I don't know who to report to in having that fixed, because obviously somebody busted it, and hopefully that somebody would pay to fix it, or whatever that process is. So that's one of the concerns. And I was also hoping to get a, an update on the pig signs. Last month, we talked about it, and Larry, you mentioned that it takes some time and some process. And so here are a lot of politicians talking about transparency, so I was hoping that today would be a day to get some transparency on what that process and that timeframe looks like. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, and Director Albano's not here today. He was the one that was working that with the city, because they have to make that sign. It takes a little time to do that, and I don't know if that is in his report. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but, yeah, be order, somebody's still got to make it. It's not like a stop sign or no barking. Yeah, but I'll try to get something to you before you leave tonight, and you get with Dion, and we'll make sure that those four things were captured, so that way we can make sure we put our request in the DFM to get those signs fixed. It's the turn on the, the airpin turn on Koha Mai Drive. Yeah, there are a number of signs that are damaged in the rail, the guardrail. Hey, good, that's safety when it's from work. Any other issues? Yes, please come up. Please identify yourself.
My name is Heidi, and I just wanted to call attention to the Board for some of the maintenance issues going on at our city parks. So my children, who I have over here in the corner, participate in baseball and basketball, and their practices are held at the Pearl City District Park, Palisades, and several others in the community. And the Pearl City District Park grass can be knee-high on our nine-year-old for his baseball games. It makes it really hard to field a ball whenever you can't even see it if it drops out of your glove. So in the interim, parents and family members of the kids on my team have been going to the parks on their own with their personal lawn mowers, and purchasing gas, and mowing the park so that it's, the fields are nice to play on. I called the City Department of Parks and Recreation and asked them what we can do to make our parks better, so that we can actually use them. And I was told, not that it had anything to do with weather, which is what had been told in the past, but this time they told me that the issue is with outdated machinery, and that they cannot cut the grass because they have outdated machines that are not working at this time, and they're having a hard time getting them fixed. So it was sort of a no-can, tough-luck sort of phone call, and I wasn't very happy with that. But I asked the gal that I spoke with, "How can I help you make this better for our community?" And she told me that the next step would be to raise the issue to the Neighborhood Board and let you folks know that this is going on, so that you can raise it to City Council, and then the Department of Parks and Recreation, especially our district here, can get the funding to fix these machines and make our parks better. In addition to that, I'd also like to call attention to the gym at the Pearl City District Park. My daughter is a basketball player, and on a few occasions, whenever she's been able to practice inside on rainy nights, it hasn't made much of a difference. You might as well be on the outside courts, because there are enough puddles inside the gym to, well, anyway. Thank you, I appreciate the time, and I will check back with you folks next month, I guess.
Okay, and because you gave us a long laundry list of items related to parks, if you could give me an email.
I will do that.
What I'll do is I'll draft a letter from the Pearl City Neighborhood Board to Director Thalen, she's the Director of Parks, and we'll have a prioritized list of things to help out with. I got to tell you, I drove past Waialu District Park the other day, and there were a lot of families that went out there and cleaned up. There was not one piece of trash anywhere.
We do that before every baseball season. We're out there, we clean the parks as best as we can, and we try to maintain it during our season, but...
Our parks are a valuable asset to us, and I know that they're having a, you know, when we, when it came out of the drought, it was, it was grassed so fast, they had a hard time keeping them, just like the state.
I understand.
But let me get your concerns in writing, and then I'll put that in the letter, and we'll try to track that.
I appreciate it, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Here. Yeah, I actually have a question, so I want to make sure I understand correctly, because I know there are people from the city paying attention and watching the meeting. And we can, sometimes we can see you guys, and sometimes we can't see the actual meeting. I wanted to clarify where she called, because that's actually not the process. You are able to go directly to the Department of Parks and Rec and get help. So I wanted to know if you called our little district, or you went so that when the Chair writes his letter, we can actually identify where the miscommunication took place.
So I called the number listed on the Honolulu.gov website for Department of Parks and Recreation, and the operator forwarded me to, I believe it's District Five, for Pearl City District Park, and I don't have the name of the person that I spoke to, but she was the person from District Five.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other issues? Okay, good, we're moving on. Okay, we're going to get into our presentations, and we are honored today to have Captain Stephen Patty. He's from Naval Joint Base Pearl Harbor, and he's also got a few of his staff members with him. And Captain, I'll turn it over to you.
One of our, Mr. Chair.
Patty.
Honolulu Fire Department is here in person. Did you want to hear their report before we move on to presentations?
Captain, can you stand by for a second? We'll get HPD, because they need to be back on the road. Thanks, Brendan, I didn't see them.
I just saw them standing in a back.
Okay, all right, Honolulu Fire Department, I'm sorry. If I was a little taller in the seat, I would saw you.
I'm Captain Wong from the Pearl City Station. I'll make this quick. So February, we had zero structure fires, six nuisance fires, eleven activated alarms, no fire, hundred seventy-six emergency medicals, one motor vehicle collision, pedestrian, one motor vehicle crash collision, two mountain rescues, and two hazmat incidents. So this month's fire C tip announcement is, don't stall, call 911. Speak clearly and provide an accurate description of the type of emergency and the location. Remain calm, and ask me for additional info or provide instructions. If you find yourself in a spot where you do not have good reception for voice calls, then texture your emergency to 911. If you don't have another password to unlock a cell phone, you can push the emergency button to unlock it and call 911. This one's tip, does any questions?
Hey, Board members, any questions for HFD? Anything virtual? Hey, community? Okay, I don't want to personally thank HFD, the last two months you've been showing up, giving us tips about battery issues with electric bikes charging. And we've already seen on the TV news, you know, some families have lost their homes because they're charging these batteries in the house. And the, those ion batteries, they need to be monitored whether they're being charged. Overcharging is where the problem is, but thanks, I put that out to my Town Home Association, because we got electric bikes.
Yeah, that's a big issue lately, so I think they want you to sort outside camp, away from a building that can ignite, possibly, I mean, preferably, but I know it's hard.
Lithium-ion batteries, okay, no more questions, and go ahead, Rodney.
Is, do they make any type of fire extinguisher right now? A, B, C, D, and I know those are the categories, but is there any type of fire extinguisher that you can purchase and have at home? Maybe just...
I mean, if it catches fire, I don't think any extinguisher is big enough to put it off completely. It can help slow down, but, I mean, probably water would be the best option.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, my apology, Captain Patty, we're up now. And we've got him, he's going to talk about the construction of Dry Dock Five at Pearl Harbor.
Thank you very much, Chair, Master Chief, really appreciate, ladies and gentlemen, appreciate you having us out here tonight. Again, Captain Patty, I am in charge of the Engineering and Construction Field Office that the Navy has set up to oversee construction of a new dry dock. With me is Matt Lu, representing Hawaiian Dredging, the joint venture that they entered into with Dragados and Orion. And so what we want to talk to you all about here is why we're doing this project. If you hear about this project in the news, what to know about that project, the people that are executing it, any questions or concerns that you have. We wanted to make sure that we came here in person to engage you. There are a lot of people that are connected to the shipyard, connected to the base, have served before us. Thank you for your service and blazing the trail, and we really wanted the community to be very well aware of this level of effort. If you're not connected to the shipyard, you may be connected to the construction industry, or you may just be concerned about things like traffic and noise, and what the process was to get to this type of project. So just by ways of introduction, we have a few slides for those that are here, present in the building, and I assume that those online may be able to see it as well. But there's a few visuals that we brought here, the text is kind of small, so apologize for that. But the first visual is really the one that I wanted to impress upon everybody. So even though we're here executing a construction project, and this is my business as an engineer, this is Matt and his company's business as contractors, but we always start with the big why for why we're doing this. It's not really about all the concrete and the steel that's going into building this big project. If you could just stay on that first picture, I appreciate it. It really is about the submarines in the Pacific and our forward presence. And the bottom line is this, we have not built a dry dock in Pearl Harbor in about eighty years. The last one that was constructed was 1943, and these dry docks, the first one that was constructed was actually by Hawaiian Dredging in 1919, still in service. And so we don't build these very often, and when we do, it's for a very, very significant reason. And the significant reason is that platform on the screen right here, the Virginia-class attack submarine. Dry Dock Three, which is one of the four dry docks that Pearl Harbor has to have in order to maintain its forward presence in the Pacific, barely works for the Los Angeles-class submarines that are in service. Virginia is coming to replace those submarines. Unfortunately, that Dry Dock Three, it barely worked for the smaller Virginia-class. There's no way dimensionally to make it work for the new Virginia-class submarine, which again is very, very key to our national security and our presence in the Pacific and preservation of our homeland, state of Hawaii, our way of life. And so that's why this project is so important, it's why we're investing, the Navy is investing so much in it. This project is the Navy's largest single-construction award to date, and for good reason. Again, we haven't built one in eighty years, so you can imagine building one in the modern era takes a little bit more. And the reason why it takes a little bit more is because design standards have matured, our environmental protection standards have matured, things like safety standards have matured. And so what it takes to be able to pull this project off according to the Critical Mission Need Date of January 2028 with full assurance of compliance, safety, and quality, really takes a very robust level of effort. It's why the Navy went and partnered with a joint venture partner of Dragados, Hawaiian Dredging, and Orion. And a minute, Matt's going to talk a little bit more about what this level of effort looks like in the geographic area and what to expect. But the bottom line is, we're building a new graving dock. It has a substantial amount of new material that has to be brought in. We are capitalizing, Matt's going to talk in a minute about how we're capitalizing on local resources to the maximum extent possible. That's the smartest way to build here. And so it's just a significant amount of material that's coming in, that's coming into Pearl Harbor. But we think that we really thought this through, that we've come up with very good ways to minimize the impact on the shipyard, to deliver the infrastructure that the shipyard workforce needs to be successful, and to do it in a way that partners with community and doesn't impact the community either. So those are all of our goals, but we, again, need more community engagement and help to make sure that as we do this, a project of this scale, that you're connected to us, that you know who to call, and you understand exactly how we're going to go about doing it. So that being said here, I think kind of pretty much covered what was on the next slide here on the basics. And I'll just skip ahead to what Matt's going to talk about in terms of the overview of how they're going about the execution of construction.
Thank you, Captain, thank you everyone for having us tonight. Our pleasure to be here, since you've been on this project. So again, I'm Matthew Lu with Hawaiian Dredging Construction Company, representing the DHO joint venture with Dragados, Orion as our partners. As most of you know, Hawaiian Dredging, we've been building Hawaii for over a century. We've been in business, built a lot of key landmark areas. A lot of our workers and employees live in this very neighborhood that you guys live in right here, and we're happy to be here on the island. You know, part of what we bring to the team and what we're continuing to do is we're going to tap into our local resources, the local labor here. We're a union contractor, we're bringing in the unions, the long guys that we work every day with us at Hawaiian Dredging. We're also tapping into our local subcontractors, the small businesses here. The Navy has a very good outlook on trying to get small business participation, we're on board with that. So we're engaging a lot of small businesses here locally, state of Hawaii, and the vendors, and other subcontractors too. This job is too big for any one company, that's why we joint ventured. So there's a lot of businesses here, construction companies, suppliers that are involved in this project. For the community here, what we want to bring awareness to is that, look to the next slide, the project location, so the main project is located on the main base, Joint Base Pearl Harbor. But what's lacking at the main spot is for a graving dock of this size magnitude, there's just not enough lay-down area, not enough space to facilitate storage of materials to help with the construction. So the government has decided some area across the way, like Waialu Peninsula on the government side, where we're going to do a lot of lay-down area with the shipping of material. And one of the things we're going to do to minimize impact to this community and others around the base is we're actually developing a way, we have a transit system, we're going to have barges in the harbor go from Waialu to P-5, like the dry dock. That way, we're going to minimize the amount of traffic on the roads that's going to be affecting the community. Obviously, there's still going to be some materials, and there's transportation workers that have to get to the project site, but that's kind of what everybody likes to want, right? Got to get to work, and there's some things coming from vendors out in the Capelade, the special areas. It's going to be trucked over, but for the majority of the project, the big stuff is going to be from sea, from Waialu over to the dry dock, so we're going to minimize that interaction with traffic for you guys. So that's what we're doing here, is we're trying to reach out to communities, give you guys awareness of who we are, what we're doing, so there's no real surprise. And we'll go to the next slide here. If you guys have any, if anyone has any questions, there's a hotline number up here, and we also have an email up here. And we take this seriously, if there's any questions you have for the project, feel free to call us, email us, we will get back to you with a response in 24 hours. Obviously, we will try our best to get a response to you within 24 hours on the weekend too. A lot of times we do do that, we have people monitoring. But our goal is, we're going to give you guys a response, if they acknowledge a bit of your question, we have to get back to you, we will get back to you, we'll try and answer your question in a 24-hour time period. Had much success so far with people in the community doing that, we've got the answers within minutes, in some cases. They've seen action taken for some of the concerns they've brought up within the hour. So we're very active, we're very community-minded, as it's always been with Hawaiian Dredging. We want to continue that outreach, and I invite you guys, if you have questions or comments, let us know. We're here to partner with you as well as the Navy and the community, and the Navy is also very much, we want this project to be part of the community, it's going to be part of us for a long time forward. With that, if there's any questions?
Hey, Board members, any questions for Captain Patty and Matt?
Hi. So on the lay-down area, Waialu Peninsula, and I know your company is located right on Molokole. Are you guys taking a direct route? Are you guys bringing in most of your material through Pearl Harbor? Or are you guys bringing them into the Harbor's Point deep drag?
So that's a good question, so there are going to be some large amounts of shipments, steel shipments coming in, bargeing them directly from the mainland to Pearl Harbor. So we're not going to see that trucked over through the land side. But also, there's a lot, like I said, we're involved in communities, local businesses, Mattson, Pasha, and the shipping companies, there's a lot of materials coming through them. And obviously, that's going to get trucked up to their job site as normal. But for the large bulk shipments, we're going to take them directly there, trying to minimize any...
Okay, that's cool.
Oh, yeah, so we're also, to help facilitate transporting of materials and large shipments, we're building a temporary trestle at Waialu, basically a temporary pier. It's going to be accept the barge directly, that's near completion right now. We're also starting to build another pier, a temporary pier at the dry dock site to receive it. So this is part of our contract, we're building two piers for the project, just to transport material, to minimize the impact. Questions?
Board members, any other questions? Go ahead.
Yes, very briefly, I heard some stuff on Hawaii Public Radio yesterday, some speeches good. I think your transportation plan from the stadium to the job site is very good, but maybe you can lobby with Hart to speed up the, speed up so they can take the train, and I'll bring it up when Hart there at time tonight, but it sounded very, very organized, so thank you very much.
So I can speak to that fact from our staff. We do have people on staff currently taking Skyline to the lower stadium, coming to the job. So we do have some participation there, and I believe the shipyard also has had employees taking Skyline and transportation into the shipyard too. So we are very much trying to promote the participation, rather than trying to minimize the traffic on the roads. And as everyone knows, if you're coming from Eva to Pearl Harbor, that's a lot easier than sitting in traffic every morning. So a lot of our employees have that option available to them, they're happy, they're very happy.
Yeah, and just, you know, one more thing, and I'd like to just say, thanks for employing the local people, because, you know, Pearl Harbor is a big employer of the local people over there. And at one time, one time, Senator Inouye came down to make sure that Pearl Harbor was not in jeopardy of seeing the maintenance, because at one time it was kind of giddy. So thank you.
Thanks, Rodney. Okay, virtually, Board members, any questions? Oh, Charmaine could not see the slides? I'll let you control it through laptop, we can. So Charmaine, I don't think we can do anything right now. I'll, I thought I sent these out as Rita had slides earlier last week.
We're not actually sure, yeah, we're not sure what's going on. Sometimes we can see you guys, sometimes we can't, so we couldn't see any of the slides, which is really not the point. It's that we, so I can see you now, but then you'll disappear soon.
All right, well, at least, and I apologize for the technical issues we're having right now. No song, sorry. But any, for the community, any questions for the Navy? We got a question here, go ahead, go ahead.
Some question on...
Junior.
So I have to bring that, okay, material into, what's your role? Pass high school to the soccer field on the road?
So there will be trucks coming past the high school, and there's actually the left turn just before the soccer field to get into the Navy's Waialu Peninsula area. There will be traffic up through that area. We have met with the high school, and we made a plan to minimize any type of destruction traffic on the peak hours of high school, that's reduced in the morning when they're going to school, and when the school gets out. And truckers with the local community that we're partnering with to bring in the material, they've been aware of this for years and doing projects out there, Beckany Point and others, over Waialu. So they're very much mindful that it's not a very good time to be driving cars, truckloads of material at those peak hours in the morning and afternoon. We're going to continue with that scheduling to try and avoid that. That's key for the community, and we're being touch with that community.
Okay, community? Cruz, come on up to the microphone. Mr. Vena was the one, few Board meetings ago, that was concerned about traffic.
Captain, I'd like to inform you that I am a yacht burg. Everything about the shipyard, I worked there forty-two years. I've been in every hole in the shipyard. I've been in every hole in the shipyard because I ran the land cable to the shipyard. One, if this ship, if this drop off five is going to be a modern dry dock, will it be able to accommodate the Ford class aircraft carriers?
The answer is, the answer to that is no, because Ford class carrier is not maintained at Pearl Harbor Shipyard. This was designed for the Virginia class submarine and attack submarines.
The Virginia class submarine, at present time in the shipyard, we're not able to do certain revolutions. For instance, on the Virginia class in the drop off, we're not able to do forward work and aft work. Forward work on the Virginia class is a sonar dome. The aft section of the Virginia class is a propeller shaft. The current dry dock we have now is too small to accommodate either one or both of them at the same time. Another question is, with the length of drop off five, will you be able to accommodate two Virginia class submarines?
Two very good questions there. First is, will all aspects of maintenance for all blocks of Virginia class be able to be performed in the dry dock? The answer is yes. It's going to be 650 feet long. That's for a single availability, not for a double availability like dry dock two. So we got funded for a single additional dry dock.
With the construction of drop off five, will you guys pre-tail the usage of drop off four because the crane track runs along the, where drop off five is going to be from?
So that, that is a coordination effort between our construction team and the shipyard in terms of when we actually have to cut that, that portal crane pathway in order to build out the whole site there. So it's, it's a very carefully timed and mitigated evolution, because of course, we know that lifting and handling a dry dock four is crucial and critical. So that's, that's a very careful, careful scheduling evolution that we have here worked out with the shipyard.
The construction personnel, with the vehicles being commercial, are they all coming to Alava Gate to have security, to check on the trucks?
So yes, there will be some commercial vehicles as required by basic security come through Alava Gates. Like again, we have the off-site, although parking, the whole stadium parking area that we're, we actually have a shuttle service to transport our employees to the job sites. We're trying to mitigate the traffic coming in to mitigate the impact on base overall. But in the end, there will be at least some vehicles that do need to come.
Cruz, summarize please.
Do you guys have to, do you guys understand about the pump well? You guys going to build a new pump well? You guys familiar with the pump well? It's always part of the shipyard, the dry dock, where the water drains to the pump into the harbor. Great, I really need to go. And you guys going to be in UK songs also? Yeah, that's good. And I really wanted to cover dry dock because kind of what I do with the submarine, we do, we state for SHT, covering over the whole. Ideally, I was told the only two places I needed to do SHT work is in Florida and Hawaii because of the humidity. The tires won't stick to the outside of the submarine. So I really wanted to cover dry dock, but it would enhance the crane operations.
Yeah, so there was a big lifting and handling analysis that was done on the, on the most effective way to do lifting and handling. And it was actually not with a covered bridge crane. Basically, the shipyard would lose the capability to, to, to bring portal cranes and leverage them between all the docks that way. So that's why we ultimately didn't go with covered dry dock.
Cruz, we got to move on.
All right. The last one is, did we do a noise mitigation because also you're next to Hospital Point? And also you're going to be next to Hickam Elementary School. Have you guys did a survey of the amount of dust and noise for that areas?
So yeah, two very good points. Answer is yes. Actually, of those areas, the only area that was going to cross into the nuisance threshold of noise was Hospital Point. So the base commander made a very good decision to temporarily relocate all residents from Hospital Point during the duration of construction. DHO has been very, very carefully monitoring noise in and around that whole area, and it's validated that move. It's validated that the nuisance threshold was reached, or does get reached here and there with impact hammering over at Hospital Point, but not the other surrounding areas. We've been engaging, we've engaged with Hickam Elementary, we've done town halls there as well as with Ford Island, and we'll stay within the threshold there. Very good questions.
So any other questions for the community? Okay, lastly, Cap, that's what I wanted to talk about. You know, when, when Duna Hodge came out here three months or four months ago, gave us the heads up, this board had no issues. We didn't think, how could that shipyard be a built impact Pearl City? Well, guess what? When the initial pile driving started, a lot of, a lot of locations of Pearl City did not know what that noise was related to. And I was at home trying to draft up some resolutions, and I could hear it coming through my windows in Waiala. I knew exactly because I used to do construction when I was 17. And what I didn't know is, I didn't know that this was a community issue. So that day, I had to come up to Waiala District Park, and I had all the lifeguards I was talking with. They were running around trying to figure out where that noise was coming from. Let me tell you, it was even louder there because if you take a look at this chart, you draw a line from, from that dry dock right to Pearl Highlands, directly right to Pearl Highlands Elementary School. And let me tell you, it was definitely impacting studies of the kids. What do we do about it? You can't do nothing. That loud bass, that the, the sound frequency of pile driving is so low. It just, it, for direct sight, it will just, it'll hit it directly. What I'd like to ask, do you have more pile driving that you're going to be doing?
Yeah, we do. There's a significant amount of pile driving to be done over the next year.
If there's a way that you could give me your schedule that I can relate to Pearl Highlands Elementary School, just with the principals, so they can plan ahead, at churches.
Yeah, we, we can do that. It's, it's dynamic in terms of when, when DHO is going to be able to actually do the impact hammering. Your comment before about, hey, there's not much you can do about it. We think there is a few things we can do about it. We've really minimized the amount of duration. First of all, in proposal, one of the reasons why we went with DHO is because they had an alternative technical concept to go with larger piles that could be more easily vibrated down without the impact hammers. Still do need the impact hammer to confirm bearing load capacities when they hit final tip elevation. But it reduces the amount of impact driving by about 90%. It reduces the total driving time by not nine to 12 months. So instead of two years of driving piles like this, we're talking about doing it over about a year. So we think we've really mitigated that. And then a, a, a last way that I'll point out that, that DHO is mitigating it is with noise control measures. So blankets and dampening devices in order to be able to do that. Again, the noise monitoring that we have, it's, we're looking for that 65 decibel level. And because that, that's the nuisance level, it's well below any type of safety type of concerns, but well, well below nuisance type levels. Well below the sound of F22 as well. But, but, but we, you know, we're not trying to compare there. We know that it's a different type of sound. You will hear it. And so really appreciate the opportunity to talk about the project so that nobody is in the dark. And Matt, do you want to talk about schedule and schedule availability?
Yeah, so pretty much for the schedule project, I'd like Cap to say, from now until the next, about a year from now. It's about how long we're going to be actually doing the primary impact driving of these large depth. Rest of the project will be some traditional concrete pile driving. But again, that noise should not transmit as far as this larger diameter. But at the same token, we are constantly doing noise monitoring. Our monitors are out there 24/7. If there's at any point in time that these monitors are stationed at very strategic points away from the project, if a threshold is met or supposed to be met, critical members of our team are given an email instant, hey, we have an issue. That's related to the project team actually driving. Say, hey, we need to mitigate this issue. We need to bring ourselves back within the thresholds of what's been allowed by the permits. In order to proceed your work. So that is a real time thing. We're monitoring on a daily basis. As far as pile driving goes for the most operation, it's, it's going to be during daytime. We're not driving at night.
And if you guys want, you feel free to call me because I'll be your feedback, let you know if I can hear it or not up there. But at least I want to educate Pearl City. They'll know what they're hearing, and it's only for a certain period. But you guys got to get that work done.
Out of curiosity, how deep are you going?
General, it's for just about 200.
Okay, I think that's all we got for questions. Yep, go ahead.
It's not really a question. It's more of a concern. Pearl City, beautiful name, Pearl Harbor, beautiful name, because we were known for pearls. We don't see that anymore, so it's a big environmental concern for me and probably everybody else here in this construction over there. So I just want to make sure that you guys are aware that the community, mainly me, is concerned about the environmental impact that's going to be caused around that area. And I don't want to hear another news going Pearl Harbor is responsible for another Red Hill situation, you know, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to just comment that, that last point here. So, so before we awarded construction, before we completed the, or as we completed the design, we, we went through an extensive NEPA required process to do an environmental impact statement. A lot of analysis done in close consultation with all of our regulatory partners, including National Marine Fisheries, including Fish and Wildlife Service, EPA, Department of Health, Army Corps of Engineers, all our other regulatory partners, our historic partners. All these consultations and all their findings, all the analysis is all publicly available. In our EIS document, there was a public review period that occurred back in February of 2022. So we came through that. We got public comments. We got the regulators and the experts to look at that. But the bottom line is, are there impacts from construction in water? Of course, there are. There are. But there are limitations because of these consultations. These consultations were very clear about giving biological opinions and being able to outline what the limitations are in terms of how do we best protect our natural resources, marine resources, terrestrial resources, et cetera, in compliance with all statute, applicable statutes and laws. And so being able to remain compliant with the EIS is a continuing focus for us. Again, if, if you're looking at what, you know, what some of those studies say, then welcome you to, to go check out the publicly available EIS and see, see what those studies looked at and how we have to remain in compliance with that in our permits.
All right. Well, Cap, thank you for the information update, hopefully, and wish you the best and hopefully nothing will delay the construction. Because those of you that, that unfortunately, you don't get an opportunity to go visit a Virginia class submarine, but it's definitely, when you look at all the technology on board. I'm a former submariner. I spent six years, 13 submarine patrols, and I, I rode all the older boats, and I'm still glowing in the dark today. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, moving on to the homeless outreach and navigation of unsheltered, the HONU program. And we've got Director Lospanos here today. Welcome, sir.
Hello, and good evening. Edward Lospanos, Deputy Director, Department of Community Services. With me here is our lead planner on this project, Melanie Ausun. And I also have online our Department Director, Anton Pruckey, for the Department of Community Services. So happy to take any questions. What's prompting this presentation to you today is the, our upcoming plan visit to Neo Blaisdell Park, starting April 1st. So we do want to come out, do our rounds, give you an idea of what our HONU operation looks like and some of the impacts we'll probably have on the community. And for the most, I mean, they are positive. We, we are looking forward to making some positive impacts in the community.
Can you hold just for a second? Vice Chair, can you see the presentation? Jermaine?
No, but I'm reading it on the Google Drive.
We see it now.
Oh, his computer? Oh, they can't like. We're going to go ahead and continue on. I apologize virtual for, for the board there. Maybe it'll come back again. It should be, he's got it set up for dual presentation there. So. Heck with the pile driving, hear that? Okay, sir, you go ahead and continue.
Thank you. So since this administration, since we've taken office, we were happy to report that homelessness is overall down quite a bit in our first point in time count. As we've been kind of stable recently. Current point in time count of homelessness done in January of 2023 was at 4,028, which before the, and that was before taking office, it was closer to 5,000. So numbers are definitely down. We're happy to report that. But, you know, this slide presents, you know, some of the challenges the folks then entering homelessness have. You know, they might be victims of domestic violence, have substance abuse, alcohol problems, mental illnesses. There's a number of issues confronting this. But I think even then, even more so, folks making decisions to exit homelessness are also have challenges in the areas of, you know, people think, okay, I just got to do my, my regular job, full-time job every day. But some of these folks exiting homelessness often have counseling classes to go to, treatment to attend. They're working on custody battles for their kids, re-aging their kids. So I mean, it is a tough situation. It is a tough hold of high model for the homeless folks. And that's kind of why, you know, our program's important to us. A part of our city's homeless strategy, if you can go to the next slide, Anson, Anson. Is really to, I mean, it's a wall of words up there, but, you know, to break it down, there's two big points of it. One is to create, figure out as many creative ways as we can to engage our homeless population. To get them to engage the system and the system of resources that the city funds, the state funds, the federal government funds, to make a difference, to change the trajectory of their lives. And once they make the decision, figure out ways to keep them engaged in the system. And for folks, you know, with substance abuse issues, mental health issues, there's a lot of, the, the folks out there do a really good job of trying to retain their clients. A lot, and it really takes an internal drive from the folks that are trying to exit homelessness to make that decision and support that decision. And make it through the classes, make it through all those trainings and do all the homework they need to get the skills and tools necessary to exit homelessness. Next slide. So the background to our HONU program, HONU stands for Housing Outreach Navigation for Unsheltered Persons. The HONU program, you know, we use the acronym HONU. Actually, when you lay it out, it's a rectangular formation of tents that actually resembles a turtle. So it's kind of a cool, you know, in our Hawaiian culture, we like those, that dualism in there. So it's a good acronym, but it's also a representation of how the site lays out. But we started this program back in 2019 in partnership with the Honolulu Police Department and Department of Parks and Recreation. One of our big things about HONU is trying to meet folks where they're at. So you can meet them where they're at service wise, but we, but we were looking, really looking to try and meet them where they're at physically in the locations that we're at. So we started off in Pato, by Pahu Pato Garden Park, transitioned to Old Stadium Park. And with Old Stadium Park, what we were trying to target was the homelessness around Heartright Field and in that Ala Wai Makali area. With this one, with Blaisdell Park, what we're working on the path next month or so is trying to coordinate resources and outreach to those folks along the Pearl Harbor bike path. But like I said, that's what I was being meant by trying to target and make a positive impact on the area. But we can't do that without folks like HPD and Department of Parks and Recreation, because that's primarily where you set these things up. Next slide, so I think there was a question earlier that I received. There was some concern, you know, have we been in beach parks? But the most part, we do operate in beach parks a lot. The reason being is that, you know, a lot of our fields, I think the woman earlier mentioned, you know, are also programmed for sports, soccer, baseball, and all those things. So making beach parks the most accessible for us. So we've been to a number of beach parks. It's a temporary program with no permanent improvements made to solve mobile tents. Next slide. So HONU services up to 40 to 50 individuals at each location are at a time. So our capacity of HONU because it's a bunch of tents is 40 to 50. And then we probably cycle up, cycle through them, a few of them, and probably hit 100 or 200 people, see 100 or 200 people during the course of tiny days that were there. Folks at HONU get access to hygiene facilities while they're navigated to whatever services they might need. Try and place them in shelters, place them with families, unite with families and other things. One thing we note that with our HONU operation that we see is that, once folks get, you know, one solid meal, a good night's sleep, you know, which isn't a given on the streets, they're. their decisions to make better improvement, make better decisions, sorry, improve quite a bit. You know, they get that mental clarity and they're able to make better decisions and help them set them on the right path. There's also some stuff we do to get them ready for shelter. Sometimes they have parts and parts of stuff that we got to pare down because there's no housing, there's no shelter that's willing, that can take them and all they belong. So we help them do that. Sometimes we help them with their animals, if they have a lot of animals. But we do some of that triage and work there.
Director, are you open for a question? Vice Chair, she's got a question.
Sure.
Jermaine?
I can wait to the end if it's okay, since I have like.
Sorry, continue.
Okay, next slide. The next couple of slides are just some pictures. I mean, the art, military-grade Zuma-Ro tents is what we use, the operation. Sorry, I don't have a tent, area of view, so you can see the turtle formation. But that's what we use, the guys. Next slide, please. The HONU goes really is to probably like a bus stop, you know? So we get them, we bring them in, we triage them, and try and get them to their next destination, whether it's family reunification, long-term shelter. But it also serves as a diversion tool for law enforcement. So folks, you know, can avoid citation or arrest by coming to HONU and seeking services to improve their overall trajectory. Next slide. So over here kind of lays out some of the, we take a homeless individual or family, we bring them into HONU, and those are the possible outcomes, emergency shelters, housing, relocation of family, hospital treatment, or some kind of more intensive treatment program. We receive referrals from law enforcement service providers, the new crisis outreach responsive engagement team out of the EMS team, as well as we start to pick and walk in, so folks wanting to just make a decision and come seek us out. We have some powerful stories around that, we're just trying to be homeless, whether it's sex trafficking and otherwise. And that's why HPD is a big partner. We've had folks come in and try to bring their bus people out or force drugs on people, you know, breaking into HONU. But that's why HPD is such an important partner to us. Our HONU emission guidelines, the big one, I think you're probably interested, is the last bullet point there, where the folks, you know, coming onsite agree to our rules, ATM perp, noise regulations, appropriate behavior, abstaining from alcohol and illegal use, all on the premises of our program. Because then, you know, I think there's, there's some residential right next to the site that we're locating, that's going to be, come up later on. Next slide. This one just kind of lays out our overall operations, I've gone over much of it already as far as how it physically configures. But, you know, bottom of our entire attention is to is that for the past five, four years or so of running the program, we service 2,667 individuals, but just under 2,000 of them navigate to permanent living arrangements or something other than on the streets. Next slide. This kind of gives you an overview of progress of the program, first under HPD and then shifting over into DCS and some of the results. The HPD, during HPD time, we did use the COVID money to kind of boost our number by running two sites at once. That's kind of why you see that number kind of deep up quite a bit in that middle area. But what of it, part of it was because shelter capacity with COVID restrictions, that got quite a bit, we were able to pivot on that. The amount of time, we kind of run through the next two slides here. Go to, if you can go to the next slide here. So the, oh, next one. So the site that we're looking at is that upper-left corner of this picture here. That's the site we're looking at. We will probably maintain no less than about a fifty-foot distance between those houses up there on the top of the slide and then the closest campsite there. But, you know, that park's pretty big, you know, so I think it's probably more than fifty. In fact, I think there's a little swell or rebetment between, next to those residential walls anyway, that we wouldn't be set up in anyways, which kind of creates a good barrier. But we will be good neighbors, you know. Chair, if you have any concerns, you know, you can feel your contact, Mel or myself, and we'll get things squared away. So final slide I had was just contact information, if anybody has any questions, concerns about the program, free to reach out.
Hey, great. Right now, board, any questions? Would you have our vice chair, she's got a question?
I do. I actually have three questions. But before I ask them, I just want you to know that, you know, we support all of the city's efforts. This project is in line with the priorities that we adopted. But I still do have some, and they're more technical questions. I wanted to know, and I asked one of these via email. One is, are you busing people in?
Are we busing people in? For the most part, so I did go over the referrals that we have in our program. And some of them were law enforcement, law enforcement, so if there are enforcement activities other where people seeking shelter. Like I said, our main goal is to find somebody within a moment, a priority, capture that. You know, so they, I can't promise that they will all be from the Pro City area. We will focus on Pro City areas and enforcement activities in the area to meet them where they're at. You know, sometimes if we get people like.
You can just, you can just speak clearly, because these questions will come up and I just want to be able to give people the right information, right? So there is a chance that you may bust people in. And I understand this is a short time, I just want to be able to give the right information. You know, we have discussions about homelessness and how to respond online almost every day. So I just want to be able to give the right information. So there is a chance that people might be busted. And it really doesn't matter whether, where they're from, it's just, in general, there might some trends, some people.
What we see is people like from the seaward coast, you know, don't want to be in town, right? So we do, we will get a audience, you know, likely from the area.
Okay. And I understand that parks are easiest and open, and there are some people that congregate. But considering that you might be bringing people in from other parks, has your department, and this is a question actually from somebody online, have you looked at other city facilities rather than just parks, which have been carrying this burden for decades now?
So we did, we do work with the state on other locations as well. So we did do two non-park locations. One was next to the Middle Street Transfer Station. That actually worked out pretty good. We, you know, people were questioning order and everything like that, but it worked out good. Another, another non-park site we looked at and we participated in was in Whitmore, was former Agribusiness Development Corporation properties. Both sites actually worked pretty good. One of the things, like I said, we try to do is try to bring the HONU solution to the community and areas where there are pockets of homelessness, to make the barrier to entry pretty low for them.
And the last question I have, and, you know, thank you for everything you guys do. I know it's not easy, it's hard to make everybody happy. There's always going to be a group of people who are not. But my last question was really technical. I asked, this park is in the SMA. And I was wondering, like, the environmental processes. I know that there's a emergency declaration, but this was started before that. This was starting 2019, and this current exemption to all those rules is going to expire like next week. So I'm just wondering, I actually asked for somebody just to email me that exemption so that I could have it and share it with people when they asked what the environmental rules are, especially for an area that is in the SMA.
I'll work with BPP to get you an answer on that. But, you know, generally, my understanding is that because it's a temporary program, ninety days, and there's no permanent improvements, that it doesn't quite meet that threshold. We do follow the parks permit procedure in order, and we actually pull a park permit. We actually operate under park permit when you're in a DPR parks. And those parks, and my understanding is that that park permit system kind of teases out, you know, whether or not it triggers an SMA or environmental assessment is necessary. Basically, it doesn't quite fit in the park permit structure. It likely doesn't, likely requires an SMA approval or EA approval. But I will get more clarification for you on that from Department of Planning and Permitting.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Board members, any other questions? Rodney?
So, one other question, I just want to say, it's been a long time coming. I'm glad to see you guys come over. I had one refer one time for a friend who, you know, needed a home for the night. Unfortunately, he didn't take it. She would have. So, security-wise, what is the security for this property?
On a twenty-four-seven basis, we do have two HPD officers at the HONU site on a twenty-four-seven basis, two officers.
Okay. And then what about the restroom facilities? Will you be guys using the park facilities or will you guys be bringing your own?
We usually operate with our own trailers.
Okay.
One of the issues that we do have is sometimes if we do use a park facility, the drug dealer sits waiting inside and then we have substance in our, in our, our site and it's not, makes it an unsafe situation, yeah, for everybody.
Right. And if I'm not mistaken, that park is supposed to be gated at what hour? Ten o'clock?
Ten o'clock.
Yeah.
Correct.
After that, nobody will be able to enter the park, whether they're driving in. What about walking?
We do make some exceptions on there for our program participants, but we will have HPD onsite with us. And actually, that's been a good thing for most of our, that's the feedback we get from most of our areas. What happens when you have a blue light sitting in a parking lot is every, the whole world kind of changes. The park really comes, becomes a safer place, nicer place, and it's been a positive impact. You know, when we're on the Y and I coast, people stop speeding when they see the blue light sitting in the beach parks that we were at.
They'll implant about five around there. We all appreciate it. Thanks for coming, and I wish you guys the best of luck. Go get them.
All right, community, any questions? Okay, please come up to the microphone, identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Mandy. I'm from Kalahua, West Oahu. My question is, is there restrictions with pets? Or are you guys still remaining pet-friendly, or is a ESA document required?
So that's that question. We do remain pet-friendly. We know that's one of the barriers that folks have to shelter. You know, provided that the animals are safe, right? So, I mean, we can't have, you know, a bunch of pit bulls at one time and somebody come in with a Jack Russell terrier and have that harmonious. I mean, depending on the type of animals that we have coming in and the mix, we may, we do exercise some discretion.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, go back to the board. Anthony?
Yes. I wonder, first of all, I think based on having worked in that area and cleanups, there are plenty of customers there already that, that streamed to the, on the eastern side, the Diamond Head side, really struck me as like the lobby of a condominium. But I wonder if there, if there wouldn't be an opportunity for some semi-permanent housing like the Calhale that was, that was downtown. I visited that briefly and seemed to be working very well. And, you know, because we do need more houses for people.
So, for example, the Middle Street site that I mentioned next to the transfer station, that was actually something that, it's like that worked out really well for us, a non-park site. But then the state liked it so much that, it was so successful, the state grabbed it for a Calhale. So one of the things that, one of the side effects of HONU has been combating NIMBYism. People think that it's going to be a loud, noisy ruckus of a campsite, but when they see it's very orderly. Sometimes our biggest HONUs in the community have come by and donated as much as they could.
So what is the, what is the transition time for someone who comes into that?
We tried to turn them over as quickly as possible. One of the things that we were encountering is that post-COVID, our shelters haven't been restored. We lost two major shelters during the pandemic. One was the Next Step Shelter in Kakaoa, second one being the Family Assessment Center. But that alone is like three hundred beds. Yeah, so it is a lot slower than it was when we first started the program back in 2019 when we had that ability to pass people through. So it is, it does take longer. It does, depending on the kind of, what the situation is. If it's a shelter, we, good chance we can kind of move them along into another shelter. If you have detox or other higher needs, placement in some of those treatment programs take a little longer. Sometimes it takes people to trust back with their families so they can move back in with their family. It depends on the situation and what the solution is.
Okay, we got to move on here. And what I do ask Director, if you could have your staff go out to Blaisdell Park on Saturdays, Sundays, a couple, two weekends in a row. You get a lot of Pacific Islanders with their church groups that go out there. They're normally close to the pavilion area, but the Diamond Head side of Blaisdell Park hardly ever gets used. I think it's the perfect area there, and I know you're trying to set up closer to the water. But it's a good isolated area where you can control everything. And I really think that where it's at is going to help out IHA. I don't know if you've contacted Chair Steve Wood yet. Are you giving a presentation there?
Yes, we did miss, when we kind of finalized the arrangements with Parks and Recreation, we missed the IHA Neighborhood Board meeting, but we'll catch them in the month of March.
Okay. Well, I really think this will be a joint IHA, Pearl City Neighborhood Board support for you guys, to, you know, to achieve your ninety days that you have this thing. Now, I'll be honest with you, I've already started around Waialu Shopping Center, because every now and then I am giving money to the homeless to help them out. But I told them, I said, you got some great days ahead. Don't lose the opportunity. I let them know you're coming.
Appreciate that.
Okay, any other questions? That should wrap it up. Thank you. Melanie, I'll be talking with you later. Okay, now we've got the elite coming up here, the seniors from Pearl City High School that have some really good information for the public. And leading, leading the group, I've got student Kathleen Delacruz, who reached out to me by email. You guys got ten minutes here for your pitch.
Good evening, everyone. I would just like to say thank you again for having us here today. It's an honor to be here. So like he said, we're here to talk about cybersecurity. And so we're actually Pro City High School seniors. We work with a nonprofit organization called CTL, or Center for Tomorrow's Leaders, in our Avid class. So just a background about CTL and what we do is every single year, since our sophomore year, we've done legacy projects where we go out to our schools, different schools, different communities. And this year, we're doing a statewide project, and we're talking about cybersecurity. So I'm just going to go ahead and introduce myself and the rest of my peers with me today. So I'm Lexi Ramos.
I'm Julian Sadio.
Catherine Delacruz.
Phil Iron.
Paulie Torres.
And now I'm just going to go ahead and pass back the mic to Catherine, who will be talking about the backgrounds of cybersecurity.
So originally, as a class, we wanted to actually touch base with neighborhood safety. And actually, we found data that a big factor as to why some areas of the island, or even worldwide, isn't safe is because improper cybersecurity. And knowing our world today is incredibly dependent on technology, the benefits provided by the exponential growth of the technological ecosystem are more significant than ever expected. And the opportunities that we can now access to are immense and plentiful, but so are the shortcomings. And one of those shortcomings is cyber crimes. Because the fact that technologies are more accessible nowadays, and that means it's easier to pull off for criminal, criminals, to pull off these cyber crimes. And looking back at the time where technology is only limited to the very privileged few, now it's easier to obtain. And this allows criminals an easier barrier to committing these cyber crimes online. And it also allows them to remain anonymous, which is harder to track in reality. And an example is Facebook. You guys might have known Facebook or even used it. And actually, recently, even like two years ago, they had like a database breach where 553 million people's information is out there publicly and probably got stolen. Hopefully, none of you guys experienced that. And that is why the biggest problem when it comes to cybercrime is that there's no one solution to any of these attacks. And my peers would be touching base on those.
So like Kathy said, this project is about cybersecurity, so you might be wondering. So like Kathy said, um, this project is about cybersecurity. So you might be wondering, what are we doing as students to help with the issue? So actually, before we even started this project, none of us really knew about cybersecurity. Um, if you're familiar with Pearl City High School's academy structure, we do have like a cybersecurity program study, but not everyone is in that program study, right? So not all of us was educated about the backgrounds, effects of cybersecurity, why it's important. And so we actually had someone come down from the city and council's, um, Office of Economic Revitalization that presented to our avid class about, um, cybersecurity attacks, awareness, hygiene, and different things that we should like know and be aware of. So what, um, stood out to us from the lesson was he went over how to, um, stay safe from cybersecurity attacks. So that's like creating strong passwords for different accounts that we have or using multi-factor authentication. Um, and we actually did a quiz or like a little, um, yeah, like a little quiz afterwards where he tested us on how well or how well can we like basically scan for phishing? So phishing is like where, um, are we able to notice when a certain like website or certain like information that pops up in like a email is fake or real? And so that's one of the things that he went over in our lesson. And some of those, um, outstanding like statistics that he also went over is that forty-three percent of a surveyed group hasn't heard of multi-factor authentication. Um, thirty-three percent of a survey group reported that they own, that they use, um, unique passwords for all accounts. So if you don't know, um, you should be using different passwords for all your different accounts. Who, who here is guilty of using the same password for all their accounts? Anyone? I know you guys are. Yes, yes. So thirty-three percent of that survey group is using, uh, unique passwords. And that's one of the biggest ways that, um, we can be, you know, more susceptible to cyber attacks. And also ninety-two percent of that sur, that same survey group is, um, taking action after they were being informed. And so that last statistic of ninety-two percent of that same survey group that took action of being informed is the reason why we were inspired to keep moving on with, um, our projects. So that way, um, we are, we are more, um, learned, sorry. We took away from his lesson that basically the importance of spreading this information widely can be used for different, um, groups of people. And so now I'm gonna pass it on to Julian to talk about exactly what we are doing as a class to help tackle this issue.
So as the class, our operation group will be heading to James Campbell High School on March fourth, that's a Monday. And they'll be doing a presentation about cybersecurity to the other students. During that presentation, they'll be going over things like password management, what makes a password strong, what a password manager software is, and they'll also be recommending the use of one. Furthermore, they'll be going on to topics like multi-factor authentication, what it is, again, and like different types, like biometrics. This would be things like your finger and face ID, a physical, uh, security key, as well as an authentic, an authenticator app that you can have on your phone and using digital confirmation via codes. Additionally, they'll be talking about how important it is to be updating their softwares, as this is how developers continue to update their products to make sure that there aren't any potential breaches that could be exploited. And they'll also be putting an emphasis on phishing or scams. They'll be talking about different signs of phishing, like how if a, a link is suspicious or if it is from an account that is claiming to be, for example, Amazon, but the username or email address doesn't exactly match up to what it should be. And they'll also be talking about, oh, sorry, that's all.
Um, thank you for listening to our presentation. Um, we appreciate hearing your guys' questions, concerns or feedback. Um, originally, our topic was supposed to be neighborhood, uh, neighborhood safety, but then, uh, we narrowed it down to cybersecurity because if we feel like that topic hasn't been talked about.
Yeah, so now we're just wondering how we can make an impact and continue to educate not only teens, but everybody about cybersecurity. And if anybody has any contacts we can help with to help us with our next steps, that would be appreciated.
Um, meaning that, uh, these intelligent hackers, uh, continue to evolve with new ways to pull off their, uh, evil deeds. Uh, and because of this, cybersecurity community also needs to grow, right? Cause we, we can't be behind, um, to protect ourselves and those, um, around us. And the securities organizations and their data is now more critical than ever. And we ask you for your help to help us have network and communicate with more people out there who is professional at, at this field.
That's it? Okay, well, I gotta tell you, first of all, I'm so impressed, all of you. I mean, such a, such a bang up job, you know, you hit all the check marks for, for communications, eye contact, everything in your delivery. And the most important thing is the subject matter. You're being recorded on a little. This is reaching out to the entire island, the islands. Everybody's gonna get a chance to see this if they go to, uh, channel forty-nine and, you know, or fifty-four to pull it up. But, uh, uh, it's so important in cyber because the bad actors are out there, all the different countries. And, uh, our seniors are the first to fall as victims. We've got to take care of our grandparents and, and our families. You guys are getting educated. If you really want to step it up, this would be a plan to see, but I'm retired Navy. I'm a cryptologist, learned how to crack the code. It's the same type of areas. Uh, if you get into the military, that'll expand your experience. And then you get out of the military and you come back to us and be able to help Hawaii and all our people. That way, you guys are ready with the, in the government position, standing by, ready. In case we're attacked in some ways, you guys can go the, the other route. But, uh, thank you. It's so important. Okay, uh, board members. Anne?
Uh, yes. Pay attention to, um, there will be a lot of money coming into the state for, uh, digital navigators. Um, you know, probably work with some of the nonprofits or government agencies, um, to get everybody online safely. So it's not, uh, so there will be, there will be, um, work with, uh, perhaps organizations like the Waipahu Adult School. Um, maybe your, your teachers can apply for grants, uh, but it, it is a very, uh, timely, timely topic and there will be paid job opportunities. Maybe over, maybe as soon as over the summer before you go away to college. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say thanks, um, and you folks are all seniors.
Yes.
So who will be carrying on your legacy when you graduate?
The juniors.
Good. Yeah, I have to ask, you know, make sure we got backup. Tell you what, the most impressive thing I see with you folks is that you're not wearing earbuds. None of them. Because like I told our friend the other day, he said, when they start wearing earbuds, you lost them. Said they're done. My boy is your classmate.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Okay, board members virtually. Charmaine? You're good, okay. All right, community, any questions? Okay, looks like we're good there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Let me know when you want to come back. All right, we're gonna be moving on here, pick up some speed. Uh, we're going into board business. Uh, the Neighborhood Commission Office came to me asking if we would, uh, afford to be able to recess in a month of March because, uh, there's a, our board meeting falls on a, on a holiday. And, uh, what I'm, if there are no objections, what we'll do is we'll swap out with June and, uh, we'll all take a break in the month of March. So, is any objections? Okay. Seeing none, well, that's what we'll do then. Okay, next item on agenda, uh, Pearl City Neighborhood Board, uh, support to some of our residents that were victims of the flood. At this time, I'm gonna turn the gavel over to my vice chair, Charmaine Duran, because I've been working this issue for a while. All right, Charmaine, you got the gavel. Uh, just a little background information, on sixth December, twenty twenty-one, we had a, a rainstorm come in. It was one of those Kona lows. A lot of rain was dumped on Pearl City very quickly. Uh, Pearl Highlands Elementary School was the first to see the impact, uh, with flooding. And then that particular yard area flooded, went over the walls that divide the residential area and then began to flood out a few of the homes. And, uh, and of course, with the amount of water that was coming down, it actually closed down Monololo Road. And then it went into, continued to travel south towards Don Quixote. And there were about, about twenty-five homes that, uh, that had, that had issues. But probably out of that twenty-five, there were about six that were heavily damaged. And, uh, and of course, uh, uh, thanks to, uh, former council member Alefante, he was there on the scene to help the families, provide information, where to submit their claims and everything. So all the processes were going on. A year goes by, two years go by. And then, uh, then I had some of the families come to me because, uh, uh, probably some, possibly some administrative issues with the way that the, uh, when their claims were denied by, by the city. And also the reasons why those, those claims were denied. So I decided to hold a special meeting and actually with Vice Chair Duran and I, we actually, at previous board meeting in January, we had a, uh, a resolution that we went to the city asking a number of questions. But, but since we didn't get any answers soon, we had a special meeting on twelfth February. Uh, council member Val Okimoto was there with her staff, along with the, with, uh, Director Gina Bono for D F M. And I brought them together with three of the families that showed up for the meeting. And because, uh, because of, uh, potential litigation, the city could not speak at that meeting. But they were there to listen. That was the point. And, uh, uh, the families got a chance to speak about their concerns and, and possibly, possibly some wrongs. So from that point, there were a couple of issues, the timeliness of the responses from the city on the denials of the claim. And secondly, the reasons for the denial. And with the families, with the evidence that they brought forward, I thought it'd be necessary that I, that we draft a letter from the Pearl City Neighborhood Board. On behalf of those families, they asked the city to please go back and re-look. You know, granted, they had some administrative issues getting out the denial letters. But on the other hand, did they do their due diligence? Did they go out and actually go out to the families and take a look at what happened? And also gather their video evidence that they had? So that's what we're asking in this letter to go back and please reconsider. And then if, if it is changed, then we would ask that our, our council member, uh, Val Okimoto then put forth a resolution for those families. But that's based on a follow-on investigation. So board members, um, can I get, and, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and grab the gavel back at this point from Vice Chair. Okay, at this point, uh,
I'd like to.
Go ahead.
Okay, so we should do a motion. So I'd like to move to approve the letter, which includes a link to the resolution and a summation of the last minutes. Move to approve.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Do I have a second? Okay. Tony, that's a second. Okay, discussion. Any discussion items? Rodney?
Um, I, I think I'd just like to say that in light of the denial of their things, it is amazing. And, and it's not to knock any of the homeless projects, trying to alleviate homelessness. But if we can spend millions of dollars for these, uh, projects, yet die thousands of dollars for these people who are actually operating taxpayers on something that was overlooked by the city. Um, I find it just, you know, unsettling. And tonight, there was discussion about the district parks and the reason for not maintaining them, that they needed to upgrade. That night at the meeting, I said to Mr. Albano, you guys need to start upgrading kind of equipment that you use to maintain these streams. In actuality, when looking at these streams, there are two streams that converge into one down by, um, H Mart and Don Quixote. While our stream comes from the east side. Other stream that impacted them on Noella, actually, according to the pictures that I looked at, started up by Pearl City High School.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we get the motions on there. Just we're gonna go vote. Tony? Rodney? Charmaine?
Aye.
Guy? Guy? Okay, Brendan? Dion? Junior? Anne? Right here. Tony?
Aye.
Myself, aye, and back to Guy. All right, give a thumbs up. Hey, Guy? Can you hear me? Can you give us a thumbs up or down? We don't have audio on you. Okay. All right. It is unanimous. Motion passes. Okay, moving on. Two government representative reports, Mayor Rich Fangiades and, uh, Director Albano right now is, uh, on travel. And, but he did give us a report and, uh, board member Dion Mesta is gonna give us the highlights of that report. Over to you, Dion.
Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me? Okay, we'll try to get this going here. Mayor's office, this month's highlights for, from Mayor's newsletter. Our bright yellow rescue tubes are making our beaches safer. First responders jump into action during emergency. And January's city council hearing, Kukui community needs to discuss a new swimming pool recreation center. An authentic cooler show prepares to debut at Waikiki Shell and new spoke chairs unveiled at Honolulu's Kuhua Park. The mayor's highlights newsletter can be found online at www.wonowaho.org/newsletter. Department of Events, Fire Services, Honolulu Zoo nominated for Best Zoo in America by USA Today, ten Best Readers' Choice Awards. For the first time, the Honolulu Zoo has been nominated as candidate for the Best Zoo in America in twenty twenty-four by USA's Today, ten Best Readers' Choice Awards. A panel of industry experts and editors selected Honolulu as one of America's top twenty zoos to be running for the best zoo in the country. Voting period of twenty-eight days will determine which zoos will be named into the top ten best zoos. Starting on February fifth, seven AM, Hawaii Standard Time, public will be able to vote once a day, every day until March four at six fifty-nine AM, Hawaii Standard Time. Voting period ends. To vote for the Honolulu Zoo as America's best zoo, go to HonoluluZoo dot Neighborhood Commission Office. Neighborhood Commission Office is hiring Neighborhood Board assistants to engage in public awareness for community support. Neighborhood assistants help coordinate with Neighborhood Board chairs and produce written reports to members of the public. Please send your resume at two n c o at Honolulu dot gov or call the N C O at eight zero eight seven six eight three seven one zero. Department of Transportation Services. Bus service modifications. This is to inform you of upcoming bus service modifications affecting Neighborhood Board numbers ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-four, as shown on the attached rider alert notices. These modifications are effective March third, twenty twenty-four. The rider alerts we posted at affected bus stops on the bus stop, on the bus website, distributed to the affected schools. All updated schedules will also be available on the bus website. Route ten. Leheh Leva Heights. Afternoon school day only service will be discontinued from Maia Eleven Two School, bus stop thirty-nine, three nine one four. Bus stop number three nine one four is serviced by Route. Route ten bus stops are located on Wiley Street and Leha Street. Afternoon school day only service from Kona Nikoa Middle School on, the on will be modified to serve bus stop four six five, two thirty-eight PM, school days only. No changes to morning school day only service. Route forty-one, Kapole Eba Beach. Morning school day only short trip from Kapole Transasire to Kapole High School at seven fifteen AM will be discontinued. Seven twenty AM trip will be added with the Eba Beach to Kapole segment. Route eighty-eight A, North Shore Express, morning service, Pearl City, Milwaukee, North Shore, New Way of Honolulu. Both morning trips will begin in Pearl City at bus stop number four nine two, Mainway Highway and education road. The segment between I A I A The segment between IA and Pearl City will be discontinued. Riders will, riders may use westbound Route fifty-one, Honolulu Wahihua, three fifty-six AM trip. Afternoon service. Both afternoon trips will end at the Wahihua Transit Center. Segment between the Wahihua Transit Center and Honolulu will be discontinued. Riders may use eastbound Route fifty-one, Honolulu Wahihua. Route one twenty-three, Papukolea Pacific Heights. The following morning school day only trips will be discontinued. Seven twenty-nine AM departing bus stop two two eight eight, Papukolea. Eight one AM departing bus stop thirty-eight twenty-six to Alapai Transit. Department of Transportation Services continues to monitor, evaluate bus system to address changes in service, demand, productivity, and resource allocation. Should you have any questions, please contact the bus stop at Honolulu.gov. Department issues, follow-up. Garbage truck safety concerns. Board Member Doran and Noe asked about garbage trucks with spikes on their tires from the Department of Environmental Services. This response assumes that the constituent is referring to the spike-shaped lug nut covers that some owners put on wheels of their vehicles. The city does not have those spikes on any city vehicles, including garbage trucks. Private garbage collection company vehicles may, may have the spikes, but the city has no regulation over those companies. The spikes have no operational purpose and are merely for visual appeal preference. EMV is unqualified to comment whether the spikes pose a safety concern. Development plan. Board Member Doran requests a status of development plan for Pearl City slash IA area from the Department of Planning and Reporting. Update on the revision of the primary urban center development plan, which includes urban Honolulu from Waileka Hala to Pearl City. Closed plan was transmitted to the Planning Commission with a public hearing November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. The hearing was continued to a second hearing scheduled for March twenty twenty twenty-four, one thirty PM at the Frank Bossy Municipal Building, six fifty South King Street, sixth floor. The November hearing and all submitted materials and testimony can be viewed on the DPP's website. Department issues follow-up and the last one. Three, pig signs. A resident raised concerns about feral pigs around the Koma Street and asked if it's possible to have road signs warning drivers of feral pigs crossing. From the Department of Transportation Services. The Department of Transportation Services understands that residents concerned regarding feral pigs around Koma Drive. However, it is the established policy of the DTS to not install non-standard signage such as those pertaining to feral pigs. This policy is aimed at preserving the effectiveness, standard of regulatory and warning signs, thereby preventing visual clutter, assuring road safety, and facilitating the smooth flow trap. As such, the requested signs will not be installed. Thank you, Chair.
Wow, good prayer. Okay, we do accept donations for signs.
Wait, I paid for it. Call it myself.
No, let's just go through us. Go through us. Okay, all right, uh, any, well, I'm not gonna say any questions anyway. That was the report. And Charmaine, go ahead.
Um, just very quickly, and when, when the director comes, I'll follow up again. I, I actually have a picture of the city dump truck, the spike, so that's actually not true. Um, I actually have a video because it's been shared. But, um, I did notice, um, somebody texted me a picture. I actually did see the truck that the spikes have been removed, but the chrome plated rims remain, which was the second part of the request. Um, and additionally, just so that this is on record, because it's not for our, our Dion who we adore, it's not for him. Um, is that throughout the state of Hawaii, other counties have Nene Crossing, Donkey Crossing, Cattle Crossing. So to suggest that you cannot put up an animal crossing sign that is like a pig is just, doesn't make any sense at all. It's just not only to protect, um, residents, it's actually to make sure that, I've actually been hit by a pig and I've hit a pig in other areas of the state of Hawaii. They can actually really, really be dangerous. So it's to protect motorists. And along that road, kids are walking all the time to the, to the school that's right there. So, um, we'll follow up next, not next month, but the month after that. But I know that hopefully that somebody will share this with the director to let him know that I actually have pictures of all the signs and the garbage trucks. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So tho- those signs on the other neighbor islands? Those signs aren't started by the LNR. So those are state signs on state highways. So this, this message came from the mayor, right? So this is the city's stance. So it depends on the road, right? Koma Drive is a city road. It's not a state road. So that's where the, right, I, I agree with the Vice Chair, right? My family's from Molochai. They have access to their signs, right? But that's a state highway. So the LNR installs those signs, not Maui County.
Bottom line.
Okay, well, hold on. Well, I mean, you know, I grew up on the big island. There's all kinds of signs. And it's really about the city wanting to protect motorists. And so hopefully we can work around, um, there is right now six rock falls signs in about, I don't know, sixty feet. So hopefully maybe they can somehow work with it right there.
Uh, again, correspondence makes a difference. We gotta put in writing. So stay in touch with me. We're gonna figure out a way. And plus, if the city doesn't have to spend any money, because we have donations, that also helps out a lot. Okay, we're gonna move on. Uh, moving on to Councilmember Val Okimoto. She is on travel and we have Eric with here today, her, her right-hand guide that keeps things going in the office.
Aloha, Chair. Members of the board, Eric Kamonu with the Office of Councilmember Val Okimoto. I handed out our legislative newsletter. Uh, I apologize. I'm gonna stand on our written reports and I usually have a legislative update for you folks. Our office has been focused on the upcoming budget for the city. Uh, have you guys heard earlier numerous requests for park fixing? So our council members' priority is parks right now. In terms of budget, we have so many parks in this district, from Mililani, Pearl City, all parks. So a lot of our requests are coming. Um, this time last year, Vice Chair had some recommendations about, uh, the reports of the budget. So my intention for next month was to come here to you guys and, uh, give you a report about the CFPs that are going to be affecting this district, et cetera. Um, because it being moved, what I can do is have that same report sent to Chair and Vice Chair to be distributed for so you guys can look over it. And then I can come back the following month, April. I think the meeting's on the twenty-third though, so it's cutting it a little bit close to the budget, but it's still, I think, is important for you guys. So I'll, I'll be more than happy to do that. Uh, and then with that, I'm happy to pick.
Eric, thank you so much. And again, thanks to our Vice Chair that made it easy for you with that whole laundry list of all our priorities.
Oh, if it wasn't for you guys, it, it, it would be just asking everybody. So it really helps focus what we're about.
Yeah, thanks to Charmaine. The last few years, we've been, uh, introducing that to you guys that help out. So. Okay, but board members, any questions? We're gonna move on. Go ahead, Rodney.
Um, yeah, Mr. Kamonu, thanks. Um, so after the last meeting with the Noe Lani folks, I hope, um, have we gotten any push lately after that meeting? Or the, as far as their, uh, claims?
I can't speak on the itself, uh, because. However, I can tell you some questions. I believe our council has the ability to make small settlements. I think someone may correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure, but I think it's like settlements under five thousand dollars. Everything else has to go to council for the settlement. So depending on the outcome of this case with the litigants, there will be a resolution for, um, settlement that will come through the council. It won't be introduced on behalf of our council member. It comes through for council and it is something that and, and in that case, it will be back in councils.
Can you speak closer to Mike?
I, uh, sorry.
Well, you know, any help in correspondence would be.
Oh, yeah. So once it comes back to council, I'll be able to speak a little bit more about it. Um, but at this time.
Right. And then, uh, what's your, uh, lady's concern on the, uh, Jim at Pearl City?
Yeah, so she, uh, I believe emailed our office. It wasn't her. We had a few other people. It's the drainage back there got clogged and it's causing some, so we, we are aware of it. We put in a request to, to, to have it, have a look. I'll have to check to see what kind of.
Yeah, well, that thing's been leaking for years.
Yeah.
When my boy played pal back in ten, uh, when he was twelve and now he's twenty-eight. So it was leaking back then. So, you know, maybe somewhere down the line, we need a redo over on that one.
Oh, I, I, I got.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, moving on to Charmaine.
Um, maybe you could email since we won't meet next month and you have already your first draft of amendments and and there weren't a lot of amendments last time. But this is, I think, like second budget. So now you'll be better at it. Um, maybe you could email us when, so we know what you guys are working on. Because I think we have, yeah, there's a long laundry list of park improvements that have been requested.
Sure, of, of course. I believe we get the, uh, budget in March third.
All right. Thank you.
Be great. Any other questions? Hey, see you none, immunity? None? Thank you, Eric. Thank you. Okay, moving on to our state officials. Uh, Jeff Hickman's not here. Uh, Casey Abbe, are you online?
Yes, I'm here, uh, Chair. Let me.
What you got?
Share my screen here. Okay, can you see my screen?
Yeah, we got it.
Okay. Yeah. Good evening, Chair Veray. Members of the Pearl City Neighborhood Board, our Casey Abbe from the State DOT Highway Division. Our Oahu District Maintenance Crew has completed the restriping of Acacia Road intersection, including the crosswalk markings. Uh, at last month's meeting, I mentioned there was another homeless encampment under the H one bar da since we had not repaired the chainag fence and we could not remove the encampment until after the annual point in time call. Glad to report that we cleared the homeless encampment, repaired the fence, and covered up the graffiti. Uh, during my field inspection last Thursday, I noticed there were a lot of graffiti along Kamia Highway going westbound after, um, uh, Hika Street. I informed our Oahu District about the graffiti yesterday, but I, but when I did a quick field investigation this morning, I noticed a lot of the graffiti that I saw last Thursday was painted over. I asked my Oahu District Office if their crew painted over the graffiti. I didn't get a response back before tonight's meeting, so I'm wondering if another group, like the Lions Club, uh, took the initiative and painted over the graffiti during the weekend. If our maintenance crew did not do the work, I want to thank the organization who did the work. Uh, the graffiti on the wall as you approach the Kamia Street intersection was painted over. And graffiti near the Po'oponee Street intersection was also painted over. But there are some graffiti arrows that our Oahu District may still needs to address. This arrow is going eastbound on Kamia Highway just before that Leeward Community College intersection. During my field investigation last Thursday, I noticed the green left turn arrow at Kamia Street intersection for motorists making the left turn into Blaisdale Park was out. I informed our Oahu District Maintenance to contact the city to have their traffic signal maintenance crew replace the green left turn arrow. I reported back at, um, the April's meeting. And finally, at last month's meeting, there was a comment about when would a closed off ramp from Ferentin Highway that leads motorists onto Kamia Highway will be open. The closed off ramp would allow YPO and Waipahu motorists traveling eastbound on Ferentin Highway directly to the Pearl Highland Transit Station and to a new signalized left turn lane at Koala, Koala Street intersection that will hopefully alleviate some of the current traffic congestion at the Acacia Road intersection. This picture shows the Ferentin Highway off ramp motorists will take that leads to the closed off ramp. This picture shows the closed off ramp as motorists drive north to get in, onto the H two freeway going towards Mililani and Wahihua. This picture shows the closed off ramp as you approach the Waiona Street intersection. Currently, there is no plans to install a left turn lane at Waiona Street intersection. Therefore, no left turns will, will not be allowed at the intersection when the ramps open. Uh, this is the current ground level picture of the intersection. If left turns allowed without installing a Disney left turn lane at the intersection, traffic may back up on the ramp, especially when large trucks want to make their left turn onto Waiona Street. A traffic study may be required to justify installing a signalized left turn lane at Waiona Street. This picture shows the intersection of Koala Street where the new signalized left turn lane is supposed to be constructed. This is the current ground level picture of the intersection. Currently, there are ongoing discussions between H dot and Hart relating to who will take the lead on the design and construction of installing the new signalized left turn lane at Koala Street. Currently, there is an informal agreement on a fifty-fifty split on the approximately twelve million dollar construction cost. At this time, the opening on the ramp is contingent on the signalized left turn lane being constructed at Koala Street. The Pearl City Neighborhood Board may want to write a letter to our H dot director and the Hart Executive Director about the status of the signalized left turn lane at Koala Street. And at the same time, request a traffic study to justify if a signalized left turn lane at Waiona Street intersection is warranted. I want to thank, uh, Representative Chan for the background information of this, uh, project at last month's meeting. Uh, this concludes my report. I'll take any questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, Casey, thank you for the really good update and answer your question as far as graffiti. The IAN Lions Club the last two weeks have had a, a really good participation with, uh, bringing in, uh, uh, some of the residents primarily from IA to do a lot of the graffiti paint outs. They've also been on Cam Highway there, uh, actually scraping gum off traffic lights because people that are there, I don't know why they can't. You know, they're going to.
I thank IA.
At least, at least we're not stepping in it. But, uh, but, but I know that, uh, that, that, uh, Representative Kong, part of the group, he's put a lot of time on this stuff. But thanks to them, uh, the community helping out. For some reason, there's a, there's a big influx of graffiti right now. Uh, I, I guess our young people just don't have enough time or they got bored with their games, so they're back painting again. But, uh, anyway, board members, any questions? Go ahead, Rodney.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Abbe. Um, uh, regarding those left turns onto Waiona, yeah, that one, I mean, I may have inadvertently suggested that. But that one was, I mean, to me, that one is, uh, hard. Um, now the one to the next one, uh, right before the Pearl Highland Shopping Center. I think to get that left turn incorporated, you would need a level change, uh, from the road coming from, uh, Waiona. Um, a possibility for another left turn is where the road, um, from Waiona past the, uh, Skyline Center, where it merges onto Kamia Highway. Um, there might be a possibility to give a good look over there where there could be a, uh, left turn or a U-turn, uh, area for them to go underneath the overpass and then, um, you know, back onto, uh, Cam Highway, uh, going west towards the H two and the H one. So I, I think that one may be a better look than the other two.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. So maybe you can, uh, work with, uh, Chair Veray and, um, request or propose your, um, suggestion in the letter from the Neighborhood Board to our director. And then we can work with our, uh, various offices like the Traffic Branch to look at it and if necessary, hire a consultant to help us do a traffic study.
Okay, Casey, I'll draft that letter and, uh, and those inputs you got, I'll put that in the letter as well. Okay, we got, get moving on here. Any other questions? Uh, virtually any questions? None? Uh, residents? None? Casey, one thing real quick. Uh, uh, if you could, uh, this is not the Pearl City area, but it's a nice, or it bothers me every time I drive leaving the Navy Exchange in Pearl Harbor to get on the H one, uh, to head to Pearl City. Uh, the homeless have, over the last six months, they, there's two locations that are adjacent to Navy Exchange, but it's on state property. And, um, they, they have really littered that area up. I don't know if the homeless are still there. I do know that in coincidence with that, there have been arson cases with the old Navy housing right across the expressway. They're the closest encampments to that, the suspects. But, uh, if you could, if you could check and see if the, if, uh, there are homeless still living on state property. Uh, they may cut holes in the fence to get over to the Navy side.
Yeah, okay. If, 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 if you can. Yeah, okay. If, 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 if you can, uh, email me, uh, like a Google map on the location.
Yeah, I'll tell you. Yep, I'll send you a Google map and show you where it's at.
Okay.
Okay, you know, so you know other questions? We're gonna move on. Uh, Jeff Hickman or Josh Greens, uh, Governor Gukas Green, he's not here. Um, anybody online? Nobody? Okay. And we're gonna move on. Senator Wakai, are you online or your staff? None? And as always, proudly, Senator Brandon Elefante, you're here. We thank you.
Hi, great evening, Chair Veray, Vice Chair Duran, members of the Pro City Neighborhood Board, Brandon Elefante from the State Senate. I do have my written report. Um, Taylor Sales online will be sending a link to those that are online for our written report. We did send that as well. So I'll stand on that and I'll expand on a couple of things. First of all, um, recently, on the weekend of January eighteenth to January twentieth, in the quarter between IM Pro City on the freeway, in, in particular, there were one hundred forty-seven citations and forty-two arrests for excessive speeding and reckless driving. And this has been in the response to community concerns about racing or excessive driving or excessive speeding, I should say. So HPD will continue to go out and monitor. So I want to thank, uh, HPD and law enforcement officers for the course of those several days to go out there and enforce. As a result of that, in my report, I have a few updates as it relates to some bills I introduced. Uh, one of them, I just found out this evening, will have a hearing, uh, on, before the Senate Judiciary and Ways and Means Committee as it relates to, um, speed enforcement cameras and a very similar process on how we have our red light, uh, photo cameras. And I've been working, uh, closely with the Department of Transportation for that. And then another bill that's up for a vote this week on the Senate side has to do with, um, increasing the speeding fines in school zones. Uh, lastly, I'd like to expand in working with Rep Takayama. Uh, thank you to Chair Veray, as well as Board Member Smith and Vice Chair Duran, and any board members that have submitted testimony for Palisades Alternative Egress Road and in the Palisades Siren. Uh, so those bills are moving both in the House, um, and in the Senate. Um, Senate, um, we have till tomorrow to wait and see if the Senate bills will be heard before the Ways and Means Committee. Otherwise, in talking with Rep Takayama, the House bills are moving. So again, thank you to the board and the community for, um, making it a priority. And with that, we're almost nearing the halfway session. So we're, we're looking forward, um, to, you know, continuing to work hard for you and working on the issues that come up. And with that, that concludes my report and happy to take questions. Thank you.
All right, Senator, and also if you could, if you could have your staff send me your, a reminder on those, on those Senate bills. Uh, I lost track of those two and I haven't put any testimony on those yet.
Yes, we'll be sure to send you information, Chair.
Okay, appreciate it. Okay, board members, any questions for our Senator? Anybody online? Nope. All right, we're good.
Have a great evening. Stay warm.
And thank you. All right, uh, okay, moving on to Senator Henry Quino. Anybody from his office?
Hello, Chair, board members. My name is. I will be standing by my report today. Thank you.
All right, Nate. Hey, uh, did you submit that to us? Oh, yes, I did. I did get it. I forwarded that today. All right, thank you much. Okay, moving on to Representative Greg Takayama. Welcome. Thank you all for waiting so long.
Sure. Uh, thank you and good evening, everyone. And I'd like to echo what Senator Elefante said about thanking, um, you Chair, other members of the Board, Vice Chair, other members of the Board for making your voices heard at the legislature. As a result, um, as Senator mentioned, the Palisades, uh, Emergency Access Road set up to pass the House next week. Palisades Emergency Siren Replacement set to pass the House next week. Fireworks Task Force, um, continuation of the work the Task Force has done so far. A one point two million dollar appropriation to continue the work for another year, that's set to pass the House as well. Um, Sunset Memorial Cemetery, um, that's passed two committees. And I might say that all of these four bills I mentioned have gone through committees without a single negative vote. Not even a reservation. So, um, Sunset Memorial Cemetery is set to pass the House next week. As Senator, Senator mentioned, we're at the halfway point, just about. And so many of the Senate bills as well is, is, are, are moving concurrently. And so we're in good shape. And thanks to making your voices, uh, heard at legislature, I think, um, well, fingers crossed for a real positive result this season. So I don't really have much to, to add than, uh, answer any question.
Yeah, Representative Takayama, yeah, thank you so much. Uh, I, I think our board, uh, this probably, this is the most intensive uh, time that we provide a testimony to help push those bills through. And I was really concerned about the siren bill, especially because of of, uh, other reasons why and, and you know, a plan down the road to be able to replace it, but we need it now.
Oh, yeah.
And, and hopefully to get more spares for other locations, because I know other places are. But other than that, uh, but thank you, you and Senator Elefante.
I definitely, uh, just to add to what you just mentioned about the siren, we've made it clear, uh, Senator and I to, um, HAIEMA, the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency, that this should be a top priority. So they're pushing it to the top and hopefully we'll get action even as we're moving legislative measure.
Thank you. Board members, any questions? Hey, virtual? None? Residents? None? Thank you very much. All right, moving on, uh, Congressman Case, that Nestor Garcia, are you online? Okay, I don't see Nestor.
Hi, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, sorry. Long board meeting. I hope I didn't put you to sleep.
No, that's okay, sir.
You looked good on TV the other day, too.
Yeah. Thank you, Chairman, and members of the board. Um, I had sent to Chairman some time ago our first quarter a report to the Neighborhood Board. Hopefully that was distributed. I did place it in the chat as well for those who might be watching online. And for those who want to, um, get a flavor of what that was, I'm just gonna go quickly over their report. Uh, he does mention his end of the year report for the year twenty twenty-three. So there's a link that you can click on that. Um, and he also talks about, uh, the talk stories that, uh, he held in-person town halls, if you will, that he held at the first week of January of this year. Uh, we started at Wanalo Middle School and then we went off to, um, McKinley High School and, uh, Milani Maoka Elementary School and, uh, Copley High School. Um, and then hopefully in the next round of talk stories, Chairman will be closer to your neck of the woods, yeah? Um, I sat through, I did actually sit through that, uh, presentation by the military with respect to, um, the dry dock number five. Uh, the entire congressional delegation was present for, uh, an event on the dry dock, um, this past weekend. And there are pictures, if you follow the Congressman on his Facebook page, we posted pictures of that. Um, he is very busy. He went back to, uh, Washington today. We have, then still have the matter of trying get the federal funding for this current fiscal year. Um, it's been operating under continuing resolution. Uh, for those who are following, uh, current events, uh, the first deadline is March first. Actually, we're trying to get this thing done by Friday. Uh, four, uh, bills appropriations measures, one of them which actually has a direct impact on Dry Dock Five. And that would be military construction slash veterans affairs. That's just one of the bills. Uh, the others include agriculture, energy department, water development projects, and, uh, housing and urban development along with, uh, transportation. All of those four appropriations measures have to be settled by this Friday or else we'll have a partial government shutdown. So they're burning the midnight all over there. Um, since I wasn't present since, was it October? Um, I'm gonna play catch-up here. In December, uh, Congressman announced his, uh, nominations to the four service academies, uh, West Point Naval Academy, Air Force Academy, and the Merchant Marine Academy. So uh, there were thirty-five nominations that he had sent over to those four respective service academies for their consideration. Uh, they came from five private schools, nine public schools, and actually one charter school. And speaking of a charter school, uh, in December, we also announced, or he also announced, uh, the winner of his congressional app a challenge. And I, I, I was listening to the students from Pro City High School, Mr. Chairman, they might want to consider entering this contest, uh, this year. And they might have something to do with, um, cybersecurity. They might have an, an app, an app that they can contribute to this contest. But it was a young woman from, uh, a charter school out at Ever Beach, again, for the third year in a row. Dream House Ever Beach, a charter school, has won the app challenge. So, wait for the charter schools. And Mr. Chairman, I, I'm also gonna put into the link and, um, this was distributed widely to, uh, C and State, uh, government officials as well as, um, non-government organizations, um, given what occurred in Lahaina. So the Congress with Congressman put together a wildfire guide. And what this does is that he points out to the, uh, federal agencies that are helpful, uh, currently with Lahaina and going into the, to the future, how we can prevent something like this from happening ever again. So he, uh, wants to, he shared that with, uh, his partners in the state and county level as well as the nonprofit organizations. A wildfire guide that can help them as the, um, plan for the future. And, uh, finally, going back to appropriations, Mr. Chairman, there's a particular line item here that is of interest to the people of Pro City and IA. Now, um, in the old days, I used to call them pork barrel projects, yeah? Pork barrel. They have a different name for it now. It's called, uh, community project funding, community project funding, CPF's. Now, he shared this, um, this, um, way to, um, secure federal funding when he sat down with the, um, city and state officials this morning in a virtual Zoom conference attended by some thirty-odd people, the legislature and different city and state agencies interested in securing federal funding, yeah? But when it comes to community project funding, there is a particular line item that we're trying to get it passed. It's, uh, in the, under the homeland security. What this will do is they will, um, fund an emergency generator at Polymomi, at Polymomi, just in case there is a disaster of some kind. The hospital can continue operations. Now, what we did was we cannot send the money, community project funding. This is one of the black, the black marks against, um, the old pork barrel process. We do not send money anymore to for-profit organizations. So the pass-through in this particular instance is HAIEMA. HAIEMA is asking for this. So through HAIEMA, hopefully this funding will be approved once the dust settles on appropriations. And there will be an emergency generator backup at Polymomi Hospital. So that's what a community project funding, uh, project can do. There's a, there's a number of community project funding items. Hopefully, they'll be approved in this fiscal year twenty twenty-four appropriations measures. But I wanted to point that out, Mr. Chairman, of particular interest to IA and Pro City. And with that, I'll take any, uh, questions that you might have.
Okay, Nestor, thank you for a thorough rundown, especially the, uh, emergency generator initiative for Polymomi. That is, that's a great idea for, uh, board members, any questions for Nestor? Go ahead.
Uh, first one was for the, uh, you know, uh, this past week, Senator was, uh, Representative Case was, uh, uh, down in Lahaina and, you know, noticed that they were getting a lot of funding for, uh, bypass roads and new roads and, uh, new construction along the, along the highway. So, um, noticing that, um, we have one here and, and although this is not our neighborhood, you know, we have a potential, uh, you know, Lahaina fire, uh, probably waiting to happen in Wahaina. So, I mean, I've, I've worked on the west side in Campbell Industrial Park for the last thirty-something years. And the biggest complaint was there is, you know, when we're widening the roads or when are we gonna get a bypass road? Uh, now, the other day, there was a big traffic jam with an accident that was, uh, took up all four lanes. So they had to open up the backside road, which is, there's a fence. So, um, you know, with that being said, you know, with the wildfire issue and the, uh, you know, the, the grants for, for the roadwork. Are we gonna see something, you know, prevented it, you know, or pre, you know, prevented for the Wahaina, uh, people? Because they're a carbon copy of one another on the west side, south, and dry as, uh, everything, you know? So, uh, I think, I would hope that you folks look at that.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. Um, Wahaina coast, um, uh, lies in the jurisdiction of our partner, yeah, Congresswoman Jill Tokuda. But we'll be happy to work with her if she lists, uh, bypass road of some sort for the Wahaina coast for her district. Yeah, we'd be happy to, to work with her since Congressman sits on the appropriations committee. I was listening earlier to, um, I guess there's a proposal for some kind of similar, um, bypass road or emergency road for Palisades. Uh, when I was on the city council and, uh, Charmaine will remember this, there was always talk about trying to, and continues to this day. People are really upset up at Makakilo. They, they're demanding an emergency bypass road. Um, and then, of course, you may reference, uh, to what was happening on Maui and what, uh, the, um, federal funding is gonna do. It's going to, um, realign the Hono Pielani Highway, yeah, along the coast of Maui because that is only one way in and out, I guess, for, to go to east and west on Maui. So there's a lot of requests, a lot of concerns for their own respective jurisdiction, their own district and community with respect to another, uh, alternative, yeah, to get around, uh, their communities. So, um, we'll keep that in mind, though, because I remember, uh, yeah, all the talk about trying to get that emergency bypass road for Wahaina either along the ocean. And there was talk about Colicoli Pass, yeah, as a, as an alternative. So I'm quite familiar with the history with that, but, uh, we can get together with Congresswoman and if she, um, hears from her constituents and lists that as a, as a, as a priority for the Wahaina coast, of course, we'll see what we can do to help her, yeah?
All right, Nestor, thank you so much. Any other questions? Hey, see you none? Uh, residents? None? All right, Nestor, thank you much.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, and my apologies, board members, uh, I, I went very quickly here and I forgot about, uh, Cory Chun could not be here tonight. But is, I don't know if there's representatives online. Okay?
Lydia Hemmings.
Okay, you're on.
Hi, yes. So, yes, I, I'm here for, uh, Representative Cory Chun, who is preparing for a long-term summit early tomorrow morning. Um, I want to echo the Senators and Representatives appreciation for the Pearl City Neighborhood Board and taking the time to both be present and provide testimony for the bills of interest to the area. So, um, I, Representative Chun just asked that I check in with you and be present for any questions you may have that I may relay to the representative to answer for you.
Yeah, Lydia, if you could, if you could just push us those House bills, again, the ones that, that, uh, Senator Chun has been working on. I know it's the, uh, the silver alert. I think that's very important. That's way long overdue. And board members, uh, I'll get that, soon as she passes me that, I'll pass that to you guys. And again, I offer to board members, if you need help trying to, uh, provide testimony in it, please reach out to the Charmaine and myself. That will help you out. And once you, once you get your password, everything established, it's easy. And the main thing you can, all you gotta do is just say support and that's it. You don't have to write anything. But we can also help you with that. Lydia, over, back over to you, anything else?
No, that's it. Call our office if you have any concerns or you want some assistance with your testimony. We are here to help you.
Okay, and, uh, probably see you next week on one of those, uh, in-person testimonies.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you much.
Aloha.
Okay, moving on to Trish Lachica, Representative Lachica's, uh, staff members here.
Jared, oh, sorry. Evening, Chairman. My name is Jared Ellis. I'm here on behalf of Rep Lachica. You have her report in front of you and on the inside right flap is our legislative update. Uh, two bills of note for the board was HB two zero eight two and HB seventeen sixty-seven, which you and the board member Smith testified around in person. Those are the two school bus bills and both should survive crossover. Other than that, I'll stand on our report. I can take any questions back.
Okay, and again, uh, if you could thank her for us because we, we came in early in the game. We were proactive, prepared, provided the hard-hitting testimony. And Dan and Charmaine, thank you so much because you, you put the right words in those, uh, testimony. Other than that, board members, any questions?
Uh, I didn't actually get the.
Any, any questions, uh, virtual? None? Residents? None? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Oh. Okay, Representative Quino's office, are you still on? Okay, sorry about that. Okay, okay, moving on, uh, border water supply. Harlan, are you on?
Hello, Chair. Uh, good evening, Pearl City.
All right, darling.
Harlan Edward for Honolulu Border Water, uh, for. Four water main breaks to report for last month, January 12th, eight-inch main break near 1858 Ho'omalolo Street. On the 14th, eight-inch main break near 2218 Pa'akuma Street. And on the 21st, there was a 12-inch break near 1308 Waymano Home Road. And the eight-inch break near 1325 Waymano Home Road. General water announcement for this month is through April 18th, Border Water Supply is offering its customers a $100 rebate on WaterSense label toilets. Those are the ones that are 1.28 gallons per flush or less. If you'd like more information, you can go to our website, BorderWaterSupply.com/rebates. That's the end of my report.
All right, Harlan, thank you much, okay, Board members, any questions? Border Water Supply? AC, none? Residents, none? All right, Harlan, thank you. Vicki, are you on? Are you on? Or Pearl City Library? Nope, don't see her. All right, Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam, Mr. Victor Flint and Mr. David Duna Hodge. Thanks for waiting so long.
That's all right, good evening, Chair, thanks for the opportunity, good evening, members. Happy to be here, thanks very much for the opportunity to give us some Red Hill updates. On February the 7th, we had an open house over at Kaheheta Groom. It was very well received, it was a chance for the opportunity, our opportunity for the public to come in and get some subject matter expert answers for questions on the transition between the Joint Task Force and the Navy Closure Task Force, which is going on until the end of March, March 28th. We're expecting to have a full transition of authority, and then the focus will shift to the actual closure of the Red Hill Bulk Storage Fuel Facility. The Navy Closure Task Force launched its new website, it's really easy, you grab a pen, I'll send you an email with that, that way we can share it to the community. You can get the latest updates, news, follow all the events as we go through this closure process over the next 37 months, 36, 37 months, I think is the minimum that they're talking about. The interagency drinking water system, the long-term water monitoring continues. It was scheduled to end in March, but the EPA, the DOH, and the Navy are working to continue that as long as necessary, all the way out until Jesus comes back. So we're gonna keep going. Yep, second coming, drinking water, the long-term monitoring information booth, this is a chance for any of our folks that don't quite understand their samples or want more information about the sampling process, that next booth is gonna be on the 29th of this month, Thursday, over at the Navy Exchange. So that, that information has also been passed to you, Chair Veray, and with that, I'll turn it over to the better half.
Thank you, Duna.
Board, Victor Flint, Naval Facilities.
He knows about the Koli Koli Pass.
Oysters, I heard somebody bring up oysters. The Navy is working with UH and NOAA to restore native oysters in Waimea. Okay, with that, hopefully the plan works. Also, on April 20th, gonna be a bunch of cleanup projects along the bike path to consist of the Aia Bay State Rec Park, that's by Magru Point, Le Hua area, Leeward side of the bike path, and Honolulu Community College, the rear of the campus. The Navy is soliciting volunteers for those three areas. And Kialaho will be working with the homeless to assist them in relocation. That includes their pets and all their kana. But what we asking the Board? The reason that we're going to these three sites is complaints from the neighborhood, from the community, from the churches. Well, we're asking for the Board's blessing, so we can go there and start doing our thing. So hopefully, we can get the Board's blessing on that, because it is Navy land, and we're gonna be working with partners and volunteers. And we don't want anybody giving us a hard time that we're coming down on these people. We're here at the blessing of the Board. So let me know what you guys decide. And let me see, what else? Any more information, you can contact the Navy Region Public Affairs Office, I have that number, and I can text that to you, Chair, and you can share that number with the Board. That's all I have, are there any questions for the handsome Mr. Duna or his compadre, Mr. Rodriguez? Is that Leeward or Honolulu? He said Honolulu, Leeward. They're Leeward Community College.
Can you give my bread?
Thanks, Rod, mahalo, brother.
Yeah, yeah? No, no, let me just ask the Board right now, does anybody have an issue with the Navy helping to clean up that area? And also, they're also working with the city, you know, to give the homeless an opportunity to go to shelter. But they will have to leave those areas. And this is going on, we've done this like two, three times already. But if they're put.
Yes, sir.
Do we have to give them a notification? You guys will give them notification that you're coming.
Yeah, that's why we're using Kialaho. It used to be achieved zero, as a matter of fact, a lady came here and solicited, but for some odd reason, they are not doing it anymore. So Kialaho is gonna take over for this area. And we know Tanya, we know Mandy and Tia, and we're going to be working with them with the Board's blessing. But that means their pets, them, their kana, better be gone by April 20th. Because if not, there's gonna, the hammer gonna come down. It's not that we want it to happen, we hope that they heed the advice, but we have to do something. The complaints are coming in too heavy, the police are asking for help as well. We don't do anything without you guys' blessing.
Yeah, well, hopefully we'll see the results of what's gonna happen here for 90 days. And that, that should have an impact to that. Yeah.
Folks will be there about the same time with homeless.
They start, they start the tents in April.
So we have plenty of wiggle room, we have plenty of time. There's, there'll be pola pola distributed, so nobody can say they know nothing. Main thing, and we're here under the blessing of the Board, and we're doing the right thing.
Okay, Board members, any other questions for our Navy team? Okay, AC and none?
We're good.
Residents, okay, thank you for, for the updates. Appreciate, sorry it was a long, long meeting, okay?
You should bring you guys in earlier when there's a crowd.
Yeah, Chancellor Penalozosa is not here, so move on. Tony, any updates on Pearl City High School, PTSA?
No updates for PTSA or PCCA, thanks.
Okay. And Guy, you still broke, is our treasurer? Yeah, we still can't hear you, audio issue. All right, and moving on, and we've got, we've got three months of minutes here, October 24th, November 28th, and January 23rd. I'll start off, are there any changes to any of these? Because what I like to do is get them approved all at once. Okay, Charmaine, I know we had questions. I think you and I will be working with the Neighborhood Commission as we move, as we move forward the Neighborhood Plan. I know there are a lot of Board concerns about the way the minutes are still being done. We'll have to do that later. But like this time, can I get a motion to approve October 24th, November 28th, and January 23rd minutes? Okay, Cooney? Dan Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I did it, Danny. I did the opposite. Okay, hold on, we got, go ahead. Go ahead, Guy, you had your, you had your. Okay, aye, okay, got it. All right, okay, other than that, let's see, I have no announcements, except our next Board meeting will be in April, Tuesday, April 23rd. We all get a break for March, and with your ideas together, things we gotta do. And again, I can't thank the Board members, all of you, for being so cohesive, team, team players. Makes it so easy that we can support our community without infighting that happens sometimes at other locations. But I want to personally thank you all. Other than that, this meeting is adjourned.